All right, it is seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. All right, uh, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion by Councilmember McKnight.
Oh, thank you.
And a second by Councilmember Sarah. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, um, I do not see anyone here for the community comment portion of the meeting. We have no presentations or reports, nor do we have any public hearings. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion by Councilmember Mock.
A second.
And a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, uh, moving right along to business I am. Eight point one, the organization resolution one oh one dash twenty-three, Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, so this is, uh, the annually, the council's first action of the year is to adopt an organization resolution. Establishing various appointments, city attorney, uh, bank depository, official newspaper, et cetera. As it relates to action needed by the council tonight is to, um, put together a list of liaisons, traditionally, the council will discuss it. Informally, um, add folks to the slide here that Brenda, either Brenda Good or Vicky has up. Um, and then make one, uh, final motion at the end, so no individual motions needed, just a conversation by the council. Kind of, if you will, kind of working it out of who you want to assign to different, uh, positions, so happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, um, all right, so Eric, generally, we just kinda discuss this. I like this, okay, I'll make you cookies if I can have that. A lot of negotiating going on, so, um, why don't we just start from the top down, acting mayor?
I would like to be acting mayor again, and the guys that Courtney will miss one meeting this year. She has not missed one yet.
Sounds good.
I support that.
Ditto.
Okay, so Christie Mock.
Thank you.
Up next is the HPC, they meet on the second Tuesday of the month at six o'clock, and that has been Christie traditionally.
I would be happy to do it again if the rest of the council is fine with that, I live in the historic district, so it's kind of a nice.
Then you're a good advocate.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Done.
Christie Mock, done.
Thank you.
Um, I am interested in the Parks Advisory Group, anyone else? It's okay to say you are.
No, I've done that.
I would say Courtney.
Okay. Yep, Courtney, that'd be good.
All right, this is hotly contested evening here. Um, up next is Planning Commission, that meets on the third Thursday of each month.
If nobody else volunteers, I'm happy to take that one.
That was Glenn, so it's gonna be.
Well, I'm keeping the seat warm, so.
Yep.
Perfect.
Okay, um, up next is Carver County Leaders, this is quarterly, the fourth Thursday of the month, generally at seven thirty in the morning. Um, what Carver County Leaders is, is as the name implies, it's folks from all across the county. Um, I've been the chair of that group for the last two years, and we just worked to come up with the agenda, so we've had, um, Lyndon Robgen come in and talk about transportation. We've had, uh, Parks Guy.
Uh, Marty Walsh.
Marty Walsh come in and talk about parks, we have had the county fiber person who's working on wiring up the county, and that's a big initiative that the county's been working on, it's kind of.
And your commissioners are there, aren't they generally?
Um, yeah, yeah, there are at least a couple of them at each meeting, yeah, so it's, um, it's been. It's been a little tough the last few years because it's been a virtual meeting for the most part, so it's a little hard, it's not a real firecracker group. Um, but it's a lot of good information that's shared there, so with that, selling of it.
Yeah, nice job.
I'd be happy to take it on.
All right.
I'll take Southwest Transit.
Hoping you'd say that.
Okay, I'm embedded.
Okay.
You're just in suspense, you wanna see how things move on.
It's too much history to pass.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the difference between the board and the.
Explain it, yeah.
So Southwest Transit Board is like, think bus transportation, so Southwest Transit, the Southwest Transportation Alliance. Um, that, I believe, used to be called the Highway Two Twelve Coalition, so they're really working on trying to. Get at the purse strings to get funding for projects in the southwest metro area, so it used to be really focused on Two Twelve. Now that that's been funded, all the way out through, um, Norwood, Young America, they're focusing on the Highway Five corridor. Um, I have been going to those meetings, I would like to continue to go to those meetings, but there's, I don't think there's any reason why we couldn't have two people. Something like that, if that's something that you're interested in, and there have been things that, you know, like Joy and I. Officially unofficially kind of tag teamed the Carver business.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
You know, so.
Yep.
Um, that's something you're interested in doing, there's a meeting on Friday at two P M.
I will do that.
Okay, so, uh, Eric and Courtney, if that's okay for that one. Um, the Township Fire Board.
I would like to come back to that, I know I left that because Lori wanted on, but Glenn was the other one who was incorrect, so now I would, um, I would like to be added back to that.
Okay, so that meets just twice a year, spring and fall.
I would like to stay on it, and I think I already have the dates for the twenty twenty-three, so I could be more committed, um, there was some schedule conflicts. And it's just hard, because if you miss one, it's like, oh, oh.
See you in the fall.
See you in a couple months.
So we'll do Christie and Lori on that one.
Can I ask a, back to the Carver County Leaders?
Yes.
Is, would that accept more than one person?
Yeah.
Can I add my name to that as well?
That would be great.
Done.
You okay with that? Perfect.
Um, let's see, Carver Business Alliance, um, that generally meets the third Friday of the month at eleven A M. Um, I really like that room, I'd like to stay on there, but there, it's nothing that says that there's never room for anyone else that'd like to join.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
There we go.
Then I think we're good. Is everybody happy?
Super happy.
Was there a second one for Carver Business Alliance, I'm sorry?
Uh, no.
No.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
All good.
Yep.
All right, so then we need.
Do we need to approve that?
Um, a motion, yes.
I'll make it.
Yep, so I'm on the second page, um, motion to approve an agreement with South.
Nope.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Line it up before you.
Somebody tell me what page where to read. Oh, sorry, it's, it's just a little too short, or some of the other ones, motion to adopt resolution one oh one dash twenty-three, organization.
A second.
A motion by Councilmember Sarah, and a second by Councilmember McKnight, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion passes, all right, um, eight point two, the Southwest Prime Service Agreements. Ms. Smith, welcome, happy new year.
Hello, thank you, can you see my screen?
Yes, we saw Lynn pop up there for a second.
Oh, good, that's a cute little picture of mine. Alrighty, tonight we are discussing, uh, Southwest Prime, Southwest Prime M D, and some of the services that fall under their umbrella, so. I'm gonna start with some introductory information, so we all are on the same page. And then tonight, we are looking for some council discussion and direction based on some information in our presentation. For reference, the contracts are included in the packet, but we're looking for some discussion and direction prior to that decision. So, talking through Southwest, uh, the contracts that we have, the services that they offer, so the contract was between the City of Carver and Southwest Transit. We currently have a contract with them for Prime and their umbrella of services, I'll go into some more detail in the next couple slides, and Prime M D. Prime service is not related to the fixed service at Carver Station, so tonight's discussion is not about. The service that's provided from the City of Carver to downtown Minneapolis, the U of M, et cetera, on our fixed service, so it's the. Vans that you see around town providing more day-to-day travel throughout the community. So some details about what Prime is, so it's an on-demand ride service, similar to Lyft or Uber, it is ADA compliant, so they are available to all people. Southwest Prime is offered throughout the communities of Eden Prairie, Chaska, Chan, Hassan, Carver, and Victoria, so it's our current prime service area. Something that's a little different is that Victoria and Carver contract for this service, we're the only two communities that do that. Since Prime is provided to Chan, Hassan, Eden Prairie, and Chaska, because they're members of Southwest Transit, so. Different contracts for different, um, cities in that area, so the closest one to compare us to is Victoria. Where those other cities, Prime falls under a larger contract that they have with Southwest Transit. So how you request a ride is typically via, um, phone call or a mobile app. Something that, uh, I see to remember tonight is that the community where the ride originates is the city that is charged, so if I live in the City of Carver. And I would like a ride to Victoria, since my trip starts in Carver, uh, Carver would be the one charged, not Victoria with the ride ends. So the community where a ride originates is the one that is charged. Uh, there are several different services that fall under their umbrella with different pricing, so the next time we'll talk through some of those details. So, uh, under the contract, there's what they call the Prime Umbrella, which offers all of their different services, so there's the typical day-to-day Prime. So if I were want to run to the grocery store, that would be just a typical, um, Prime trip, or if I need to get to work, that would just fall under Prime. But there are several other services that we're starting to learn some more about as members of the community start to use them. And, uh, start to be part of the contract that we have with Southwest, so. One that I know we talked a little bit last year was service to, uh, Minneapolis Airport. So you're able to call a ride via Southwest Prime to get to the airport, ten dollars is charged to the rider. Southwest Edge is another service under their umbrella, which widens their scope of service area, so in the previous slides, I talked about the cities. That it covers, so in the primary, you can get to any of those cities, but, um, Southwest Prime Edge adds the addition of Shakopee, Mystic Lake Casino, the four ninety-four corridor. Edina into the Mall of America, and that's five dollars charged to the rider. Southwest Prime Essential is, uh, a ride just to grocery stores and pharmacies, and that's charged at two dollars and fifty cents. And Southwest Prime M D is, uh, to non-emergency medical needs, if I had a doctor's appointment, I could use Prime M D, which is charged five dollars to the rider. Uh, it sounds super clear in our contract, but from our understanding, the city has charged the same rate for all of those services under that umbrella, which is twelve dollars a ride, charged to the city. Hours of operation for Prime, Monday through Friday, five thirty A M to seven P M, Saturday, six A M to five thirty P M, no offerings on Sundays. So talking through the pricing that I talked a little bit with the umbrella previously, so. In our twenty twenty-two contract that just lapsed, the rides in total were fourteen dollars, so that was paid four dollars by the rider, ten dollars paid by the supporting city. So again, wherever that ride originated, that city was responsible for that ten dollars. In the twenty twenty-three contract that's in the packet tonight, ride, um, ride price has increased to seventeen dollars per ride. Which bumps up to five dollars paid to, by the rider, and it bumps up to twelve dollars paid by the supporting city. This feels tricky for us right now, the city has provided the draft contracts in late December twenty twenty-two when our budget was set. Uh, with that increase in pricing, so that came as a bit of a surprise to us, so something we'd like to discuss and look for direction from, from the city council. So I want to take credit for this beautiful graph, Lynn put it together, and I think she's gonna support some of my questions, so any credit for this graph goes to her. Uh, some things that you need to think about as we start making some decisions about, um, the Prime, Southwest Prime, uh, contract. Is that ridership is continuously increasing, so if you look at the difference between twenty twenty, which was maybe just a bizarre year in total. But comparing numbers from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, ridership nearly doubles many of the months that are shown, so the blue is skyrocketing. And even in the past couple of months, you see the numbers drastically increasing. Many riders, um, versus occasional trips is something interesting to think about, so is it one hundred different people doing one hundred different trips each month? Or is it one rider to going to work five days out of the week, so Lynn was able to pull some of that information that was shared with the council earlier that. There, uh, have been some trends in ridership, so the highest number is that there was one rider who used the service nineteen times in a month, so. You suspect that that person is likely going to work and going home to be able to use Prime nineteen times in a month. And another one that I found really fascinating was that ten people use the service ten plus times in November, so. It doesn't feel like we're necessarily capturing, uh, large audience, but it seems like the audience that is using Southwest Prime. Is using it often to, for their day-to-day trips, whether that's running errands, um, getting to work, visiting family and friends, et cetera.
Mrs. Smith, I have a question on this slide, where it shows the three years, were, was our contract, were the rates the same every year?
So in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, it was, uh, sorry, twenty twenty, the three years that are on there, yes, so twenty twenty-three is the first change that we're seeing. So they increased from ten dollars charged to the city to twelve, and going up from four dollars to the rider to five, so twenty twenty-three is the first year with a proposed change.
All right, Ms. Smith, I have a question, I apologize, what about the return trip?
So number one, you don't have to apologize ever, um, number two, so if I'm taking a trip from Victoria to Carver, that trip is charged to Victoria.
If I.
It's a trip.
If I go to the Mall of America, what happens when I wanna come back?
Hmm, that's a good question, since they're not in the prime area, I don't know if I know the answer to that, Brent, do you have any intel?
I don't, other than wild speculation.
Same.
So to be clear then, it's not being utilized for return trips outside of, uh, the immediate area, so any extended. Uh, destinations don't have return travel?
Yes, I would suspect that to be true, we can confirm with Southwest, but you wouldn't be able to start a trip at Mall of America since it's outside of the service area. I'm not sure if you can give your rider a little nudge nudge, like, hey, come back in four hours when I'm done shopping. But we can get that information from Southwest, but since they're outside of the primary, I suspect that that.
Is that.
Could not be part of it.
I'm sorry, is that defined in the contract, that we would not pay for a return trip?
Uh, so, yes, to the degree that the originating city is the person that pays, but it doesn't go into that level of detail.
Yeah, I think there's a possibility that we might be charged depending upon.
Yeah.
What the service is, so like, think of like, the airport, you know, they're getting rides back from the airport, I've seen Prime vehicles pick people up. We just need to dig into what that financial methodology is.
My guess is that we are, so for an airport, if you book the ride, you pay for the return trip upfront. So my assumption is that both the to and fro are being charged to the city.
We'll verify that.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll be the first to admit, um, this year with the contract proposed pricing change was the first year that we, um, really drilled into some of these details in the contract, so the contract is always reviewed by Dave. Um, reviewed by staff, but as we've started to even internally think through some of these questions, we've started to. Try to drill into it a little bit more, and we found some areas in the contract that are a bit more vague than what we probably would like, so. If there are areas that are confusing, or if you need more information, I think, uh, we'd be happy to pass those questions on to Southwest and follow up with some additional information too.
For what it's worth, I'm not seeing any pickup addresses on our monthly ridership report, starting at M S P or M O A. Indicating that they're being charged to us, but I think it's good to dig into, to confirm.
So talking through where we're at with pricing and with the amount of ridership that's increased in recent years, I know that budget has been. At the forefront of people's minds when I'm thinking through this contract, so through November twenty twenty-two, the city has spent twenty thousand three hundred ninety dollars on Prime. In twenty twenty-two, we budgeted originally fifteen thousand five hundred, which required a budget amendment because we hit that pretty quickly. Something to note is that we have not received our December invoice yet, and, uh, with the projected numbers that we've been seeing lately. We're anticipating roughly an additional two thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars being added to that total. So the total twenty twenty-two anticipated cost of the Prime Contract is roughly twenty-three thousand dollars. So as we continue into twenty twenty-three, we have increased ridership with increased cost of service, something that we didn't anticipate at the time that we were setting our budget. Uh, with a big question of what does that look like for us in twenty twenty-three, knowing that both of those things. Uh, increased ridership will likely continue as well as the increased cost, so again, the contracts cover that entire umbrella of services, so it's Prime, it's Prime M D, it's the M S P Airport Trips. Uh, Prime Essential and Prime Edge. At the time of our budgeting process, we allocated twenty thousand dollars using twenty twenty-two as kind of our gut check, thinking that twenty thousand felt. Pretty good based on the numbers that we were seeing, but the increased cost of service that came at us late December was a bit of a curveball and something that we've been. Grappling with just at a staff level, and we're looking forward to a discussion and direction from city council, so. Again, contracts are included in the packet, but I'll open it up for discussion with the city council.
Uh, forgive me if this was in the packet, but with the increase to the twelve dollars per ride for the city fee. What, um, would our twenty twenty-two costs have been?
I have it in the pack, um, in the memo, I did it really well.
Oh, you did, okay.
I think it comes out.
I see several different numbers, and I wasn't sure where it is, so if you can point me there, that would be great. Uh, okay, through November, so you did do twenty twenty-three cost with our number of riders through November, so just not including December. Um, would have been close to twenty-five thousand dollars, okay.
If, this is Dave, if I could jump into just real quickly, um, going back to the question about. Charging the city and where rides originate, for the Prime service, the city is only charged for rides that originate within the city. Of Carver, that's pursuant to the contract, um, so you get charged twelve dollars per Prime service ride if it, if it starts in the City of Carver. Uh, and for the Prime M D service, it's actually a different fare structure where the city gets charged. The total amount, uh, used to be five dollars, the proposal for the new fee is six dollars, and that's for any trip that either originates in Carver or terminates in Carver, so I think it. It cuts both ways on those Prime M D rides, probably because the intent is to just get people to and from, you know, their medical appointments and that kind of a thing.
So I have questions about the sustainability of this, uh, just in the cost increase, so twenty-nine percent, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two. Uh, and now we have another cost increase, did we have any say in the distribution of. The additional cost for twenty-three, that allocation, two to the city and one to the rider?
So I'd like to make a couple comments as the representative on the Southwest Transit Commission, so, um. Uh, you know, I had several conversations with Matt Faiton, who is the interim CEO of Southwest Transit, and I know you probably don't know all the background, is, um. The, uh, Len Simmich, who has been the CEO for many years, retired earlier in twenty-two. And Matt, who has been the operations director, has stepped up and taken an additional interim CEO role. So he's kind of got a lot on his plate as we've been recruiting a new CEO, which has taken incredibly longer than we thought it would. Like, we thought we would have this done in March of twenty-two, and it's, we still don't have one, so, um. Anyway, so I had some conversations with Matt about how this gets handled, because I don't even remember this being an item on the commission's agenda, right? This was never discussed as part of budgeting or anything like that, so, um. And Matt profusely apologized for bringing this so late to the cities, so there are two cities that pay these per-city fees. Carver and Victoria, because we're not in the taxing district for transit, okay, so Chan, Hassan, Chaska, and Eden Prairie pay differently. So it's not apples and oranges, it's apples and giraffes, like, it's totally different, okay, so, um.
Brent's writing that down.
And giraffes, okay, so, um, so Car, so Victoria did receive this increase as well. And so this was because our contract with Southwest Transit has been under the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold of an expense with Southwest Transit. It's at the CEO's discretion to negotiate, so it doesn't come in front of the commission, right, there's. Certain amounts that we allow the CEO to handle on their own without every transaction having to go through the commission, so that's kind of why it didn't come to the commission. And so Matt, uh, in his role, um, was really looking at, this is not a money-making scenario, this is purely to cover the costs. Of the operations of Southwest Prime, okay, so never is there an intention for Southwest Transit to make money on these contracts, or just trying to cover costs. So he was looking at the expenses, um, to cover all the additional Prime services that they've been offering, right, they've been adding a lot of new features like the four ninety-four corridor, the airport, the blah 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 blah, right? And they're gonna continue to add more with Prime as well, they have some other programs coming out that we'll get the benefit of as well. So as they've been expanding those efforts, they've known there's their costs going up, and that's why he made the call, we haven't had a. Price change in three years, and he made the call that we needed to increase it, and he actually admits it's probably still not going to cover all of the cost. With all the expanded services that we benefit from, so, um, I don't know if that means that there will be another price increase. But what we did get agreement on, and I talked to the chair of the commission as well, in that, uh, any changes to our pricing will come during the city budgeting cycle. That we know about it, right, when we're doing our budget, and we can plan for these things and have this discussion in June or July, right, instead of now.
So, and maybe back up a little bit, and I'm, again, you're, you're educating me in our past. But the goal of the city is to promote ridership of Prime and Prime M D, doesn't look like Prime M D was utilized, did I see that?
No.
Correctly.
Southwest, I would say, I would actually say that a little bit differently, so Southwest Transit is responsible for all the marketing and promotion, right? The City of Carver is really enabling transit, right, so if we don't sign this contract, no rides can originate in Carver.
Is there.
Can I just interrupt real quick to give a little bit more additional background?
Cause I, you can, I, I, and I wanna preface by saying, absolutely see value.
Yeah.
In a lot of this.
Yeah.
I'm worried about, are we providing, are we subsidizing rides to the airport?
Right.
For the Mall of America, where that's.
Yeah.
Maybe not the, the charge of the city, and I, I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Well, and, and my counter to that is, I see signing a contract with Southwest Transit as providing transit to the city. Not making judgment calls on how people use the transit, we also talk a lot about being competitive with our neighboring cities, right? Are our taxes similar to Chaska's and Chan's and Eden Prairie, do we have similar amenities? All of those sorts of things, do we have parks that are similar, you know, we, we compare a lot about why somebody would choose to live here versus some of our neighbors. All of our neighbors have Southwest.
I will have some input on the airport.
Airport. Yeah, so I, I get it.
I will wait, I know, of course, waiting. Yeah, I know.
And so the Southwest Prime service, I don't, is not a pick and choose, your options, right? We can't say, oh, not Mall of America, not airport, oh, but you can take people to, uh, Normandale Community College, that's okay. Right, or somewhere else along the four ninety-four corridor.
Well, it's a decision to the city if we wanna keep going with cost increases and how long.
Sure, if we wanna do Prime at all, but I, I guess my point is, in the Prime contract, you don't get to necessarily.
So we can't exclude an area.
Right.
Or a.
Right, it's Prime, it gets all of this, as well as anything else there.
And understand, I'm not, I'm not saying let's, let's vet the destination, but, um, maybe limit the.
Yeah.
Those concentric circles of, of destinations, uh, what the city is willing to subsidize. Again, I, you know, if you have somebody who is not able-bodied, who needs a ride, absolutely, uh, Prime M D, absolutely. But if the, if the cost is gonna be going up by that percentage year over year, you know.
And that's a fair question, I mean, I think that we can ask Southwest Transit to say, what do we think twenty-four is gonna look like in twenty-five?
Because we can provide a ride to the Eden Prairie Transit Hub.
Yep.
And they can go from there, I don't know, but Courtney, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, so what I was gonna say was, it was probably twenty nineteen or maybe early twenty twenty, Prime service had already been included in our contract.
Mm-hmm.
And then we started paying for it, was that in twenty twenty? Twenty nineteen-ish, and, um, it went away very suddenly. I, I continue to be a little bit irked about Southwest Transit's communications practices, because. It was probably this time in the year, and we were informed that we were gonna have to pay for it, and it had been kind of yanked, so. To not get the information, and I feel like we had another rate increase that was given to us very late in the year. Um, so this isn't the first time, um, so I'm disappointed that this continues to be an issue, and I think. Um, it's not on us, but I think we're gonna have to be more proactive in going to them.
Well, I, I plan to bring it up at our next commission meeting, um, you know, uh, Matt and, uh, Jerry, the new chair for twenty-three, had a conversation about it. New, you know, cause I expressed, I said, I want the commission to be aware of this, this is not great from a city planning perspective, we're blindsided, our budgets are done, like, this is not a conversation we wanna have in January, period.
Uh, where I was going with that is, when Prime service was yanked, um. We really truly saw the impact that it has on our communities, and there was a family that we had, another resident advocating for, who had a disabled child. And this was their only way of getting out and going to the store with this, with their, their kiddo. Um, because they didn't have a handicapped accessible ban, and then other folks who were using it to get groceries or to get to work, so we really saw truly, like. From zero to sixty. So, we really saw truly, like, from zero to 60, how much this was being used. We decided to bring it back online, even though we were paying for it, and that's where kind of all of this started. I agree with you that, for me, um, I think that prime needs to be providing basic transit service, and it's great, and I, I love that they're intuitive, I love that Southwest Transit is constantly growing their business and thinking outside of the box. However, we talk a lot up here about wants versus needs, and I'll argue that a need is perhaps a trip to the Eden Prairie Walmart, as I'm just looking through, and that's what pops out on the ridership report from November. Perhaps a, a need, you know, is a Normandale Community College.
Yeah, my neighbor takes it to.
Popping out, but I think a want, to the Mall of America, a want is a trip.
What if you have a job at the Mall of America?
The airport, and I've, I've ridden it to the airport, it's a great service.
Hold on, I need to jump in here before.
I just, I don't, I want to see if we can kind of manage the scope creep, because, you know, you alluded to all the other stuff that's, you know, coming around the bend, and I think that that's great, but when I look at this, I look at it as a tool, tool for transit in Carver to help with those who have transportation needs, not somebody who's looking to do a day trip to the Mall of America. You know, from these reports, I'm not seeing somebody go there enough that indicates that they're working there. Anyway, the, the, it's not my role to judge, I think this needs to be for basic needs. And another way to look at it is, you know, if we look at business development, and from a business development standpoint, we need to have transportation. We, Matt Uderman and Commissioner Uderman and Commissioner Fahey organized, um, the Carver County Commerce Corridor Tour, lots of season there, I can't remember what he called it, um, last fall, where we brought in Greater MSP, and she was talking about the importance of, uh, housing, workforce housing, and transit for our areas, and that's something that I want to make sure that we continue it, but I do have some concern about budget creep on this.
Or impatiently, either way. Um, so we reviewed this at a work session some time ago, and during that, I'm, I had commented about the fact that I like this service, I have a friend who used this after having brain surgery, because they couldn't drive any longer, but they could get to work. Um, and they didn't use it every day, but when they had a time when they couldn't be driven, they used it. So, I think that this is a great program. However, I have a huge problem with subsidizing people taking a vacation trip to the airport. I don't think that's what this program is for. And Joy, and I understand what you're saying, how do we get to know what everybody is riding for? I, I, I understand that, but to me, if we as a community subsidizing something to help those with less or who have, are disabled, um, things like that, a ride to get your, to catch your, you know, your flight to Mexico for vacation, if you can, if you can, if you have any of that flight, chances are you can afford to, to get yourself to the airport. It's just more convenient and cheaper if you can have somebody pick you up at your house and drop you off there. So, looking forward, this has grown, and we are constantly out above our budget, right? It seems like all the time it's going above our budget, which shows that there's need.
Yep.
And I, and I want to continue with this program, but I, I, I'm looking for some maybe guidance from Dave Anderson here, and Erin or whoever else works with these contracts, are there ways that we can say, we're not giving, I mean, here's our circle, maybe that's it, you can go to, we can get you this far. Or, and I hate to say that, like, because you might have an appointment that's outside of that, let's say it's Edina. But I can't, I can't say that the city and the taxpayer should be subsidizing vacationers who are jumping on it to go. And I know you go to the airport, but.
I know, I thought, I want to make a couple of counterpoints here, just to kind of keep it in perspective. Erin showed the hours. It's not 2:00 or 7:00. I can't take it to the airport for most of the trips that I use, I don't use it, okay? So, it's very Monday through Saturday, there's no service on Sundays, um, and so that, it is limited in that way. So, a lot of people who might be needing to go to the airport may not be able to use it because of the hours of operation. Um, you know, and I really, you know, I mean, and Courtney has mentioned this, that Southwest Transit is really trying to uniquely look at ways to expand the service, and really they're targeting areas of employment. They're targeting the 169 corridor, going into Shakopee for some of the bigger employers there. They're really trying to say, where are some bigger employers that we can get people to work? I mean, that's what they're focused on, trying to find transit to and from. The airport is a big employer, the Mall of America is a big employer, I know we're not necessarily, we can't tell why people are using these, but that is the intention behind it.
What about Southwest Metro Bus Service for those kind of locations? Why wouldn't they, are we incentivizing them to choose a single ride versus using?
Using, I'm sorry, what else?
Using bus. Bus.
Our, our rides are so limited now, they've been.
They're limited, so even from the, um, the Parkin ride?
Yes.
Okay, so those are fixed services and only go to downtown and the U of M.
Okay, so we have, there's not an option for a lot of those other destinations?
Right, exactly, so.
It doesn't take them to the other terminal in Eden Prairie?
Uh, it might stop there, it might not, I don't know. Um, but if you want to go anywhere from, you know, if you want to go to a grocery store in Chaska, right, it's not going to take you. You can't take that kind of bus service, and it's limited, that's limited to Monday through Friday.
Let me ask a different question then. So, I think it's important to preserve the service, don't get me wrong.
Yeah.
What's the breakpoint where, you know, what's the city willing to pay? So, do we work backwards from that, are we willing to pay $30,000? Because we're headed towards $30,000.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, based upon the cost that Erin did, at least 25.
Well, we were 26, if we were last year, 22 with December, we'd be closer to 27 and 25. That's how I added up the numbers, but I could be wrong.
Yeah.
So, we're headed to 30 or 40 in 2024. Are we willing to do that?
Yeah.
So, one thing we did talk about, we've been talking about this budgeting issue, it might have been earlier this year, is that it's kind of hard to draw that line in the sand, because we can't say, you know, if we would have said this year, we have $20,000, and then be like, oh, sorry.
Sorry, November and December.
We're done, not October 18th, you know, so that's, and we can't, you know, same with, because it was one of my questions, can we say we have $1,000 to spend a month? And then, you know, maybe we run out on the 28th, maybe it lasts us the whole month, maybe it only, you know, lasts us for the first three weeks.
But what if we do run out in November, there are other services, I mean, they've been getting a subsidized ride all, all year. Because one of the things is that we budget this amount, and every single year, we end up having to come back and kick in more in the last couple of months. I mean, there's WeCab, there's regular cabs, I don't know, I mean, there's some metro mobility services, things like that. I, and I, I think it's a good question to ask, how far are we willing to go? Because if we are, let's say, we do the $20,000, and then, oops, well, we don't want to cut it off, so we'll kick in another five. So, now we're at 25, now we kick it at 30, and it's always that last couple of months, and we, we so far have kicked in what we've needed to cover that gap. But where does that, where do we stop, right?
I, I agree with you on the budget creep. I don't think that there is a good comparable service to this, for what folks are paying and what they're getting. WeCab is very, very, very limited, you know, cabs are super expensive, even ride shares are significantly more than six, five, six bucks.
But we, we can't subsidize everyone for everything, if things get, you know, sometimes things are more expensive, and I, and that's hard.
Right, but I'm just saying we're in apples-to-giraffes territory there.
With the WeCab and the other things?
Comparing it to.
Do I have to listen to apples-to-giraffes from now on?
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.
All right, so this got answered, I think, earlier. Do we have the ability to go back and say, okay, of this cost increase, instead of us paying the 66%, the rider paying a third, can we turn that around? Can we shift a little bit more of the burden to the rider? Do we have that ability?
I'm not sure that we have that ability, because that's a, a fee that they set across the community.
Okay.
Because they, they set a ride.
Because it would help preserve the service, right?
Across the entire Southwest Transit service area, is my point. Like, if you live in Eden Prairie, you don't pay a different amount for prime than you pay in Carver, Victoria, or Chaska.
Because then potentially you'd be paying a different amount for return trip, right?
Yeah, exactly, it'd be very random, people would be like, what?
Well, and how would you ever keep that straight, run, driving people around that?
I know they have sophisticated software, but yeah, yeah.
So, Victoria, their riders pay exactly what?
Correct, what we're paying, yes, and they approved the 20%.
I would like to see if we can ask Southwest Transit if we can opt out of the airport service and the Edge, which, with my understanding, would narrow it down to making prime MD available to residents of Carver, folks who are originating from Carver, um, and anywhere in the four communities, five communities that Southwest Transit serves.
Would it get them, it would be important to get them to Eden Prairie, because that's a major transit hub, right? Would it do that? Is that?
Yes, if I will go to Victoria, like, think, the southeast, you know, the school district?
Okay.
And Eden Prairie.
All right.
Erin, can you pull up the slide again that has all the listings of what's Edge, what's included in all of those?
Sure. Oh.
Yeah, so it's my understanding, if we keep it to.
So, just with the prime?
And essential and MD, but not airport, not Edge. But again, you know, like, you take a look again at the monthly rider reports, just browsing super quickly, that's going to save us.
Right, and I have to say, I'm not all on board with driving people to Mystic Lake, if you need a subsidized ride, maybe you should be gambling.
Well, they could be working there.
I mean, it is 494 corridor, so you're eliminating to Normandale College as well.
Well, at least do we have time to do a study of this, or this is the first, is this the first time that you as a group have seen this destination report?
No, I think we've seen it before, I mean, I, I don't know that we can necessarily categorize it into.
I have a question about MD. So, does MD go anywhere you need it to go then? So, like, if you, if we were to just go with prime essential and prime MD, if I needed an MD appointment, though, could I get to Edina?
I don't think that's going to take you to Rochester.
But I, but I mean.
I think they expanded it.
So, it's any medical facility in Eden Prairie, Chan Hassan, Chaska, Carver, and Victoria. Ridgeview facilities in Waconia and Excelsior, as well as select medical facilities in Minnetonka and Edina.
Okay.
So, it's a lot.
Okay, yep, yep. And that, that's all under the MD heading?
Correct, correct, correct.
Yeah, I kind of like the idea of essential and the MD. I think that covers, to me, that covers what we are trying to, to provide and subsidize for our community.
See, but I'm also saying traditional prime, so taking you to where you need to go in our five communities.
Okay, but then, without MSP?
Correct.
And Edge?
Correct, yeah.
So, Edge would eliminate anything on the 494 corridor, so Normandale Community College, any employer thus by, I think they stop at.
I'm okay with that.
And then if they.
I'm too into here, but I'm okay with that.
And then if they expand to 169 corridor, like, with 62, the Golden Triangle area, we would exclude all of that as well.
I like the prime and the essential and MD and, and taking out the airport and the Edge for now, I do.
It'd be interesting to see how many riders we would impact.
Yeah.
How many complaints we'd get.
Well, and I, not conversely, but, you know, also, would that have an impact? Because, again, taking a look at this, Lunds Chan Hassan, Walmart EP, Chaska Address, Chaska Walgreens, Victoria, FedEx, Shakopee, that's the first one that I read that would be cut out.
Right, so, I, I also, you know, the data that Lynn had put together about the frequent riders, right? If somebody is using it regularly 10 or more times a month.
Are they going to MD or?
I don't know.
Right, so then that I can get, of course.
For sure, but if they're going to 494 corridor, because it's their job or whatever, then, yeah.
Yeah, it just, with as much money as we're spending on this, and as much as we're having to kick in, and it's going up, and I understand them raising the prices, that's the way of the world right now, like, I.
Well, we've had flat prices for three years.
Yeah, that doesn't, that, that doesn't surprise me at all, I'm not surprised. But again, staying how high are we willing to go when we continually budget and then have to keep going and keep going and keep going? I just would personally feel more comfortable doing the prime and then the things that we know, the essential and the MD, which is really your, your essential needs, and then getting you to your medical appointments. Those are the things that are, for me, that this program, I'm comfortable saying the city should subsidize this. So, where I'm at is, if it's possible, I would like to take out the airport. But it's weird, I like Mall of America's so close, so if somebody really is working at the airport, you go to the Mall of America, and there is another transportation op, uh, possibility to get to the airport. I'm looking at it more as, well, one thing I really like is how the service hours align with clinic hours. You know, they align with your typical schools, your standard business hours.
Yeah, retail hours.
So, there's no Sunday, so I like that the hours of service they allow align to what I, I am comfortable subsidizing transportation for. What I don't want to happen is somebody, um, has a job opportunity, you know, somewhere that 494 corridor or Mystic Lake, somewhere, and says, oh, I can't take the job, I don't have transportation, and I live in Carver. Like, I want this to be a place where you can get to and from work, to and from school, or.
And the converse.
In like an interim, like, you know, it's not their, like, maybe long-term transportation, but it's, yeah, it doesn't stop their life. We also take positions that we are generally able to get to, and we take that into consideration when we're moving somewhere, when we're getting a job, and, but I don't want to have to, like, dictate why someone can have the subsidized ride and why they can't. I'd rather just let that individual choose, you know, yes, I know this is subsidized, and, and I know, you know, others are helping pay for this, but I am taking the ride.
I also want to go back to something Courtney said, where, you know, she was also thinking about corridors for employers, right? And we want to be able to bring in people to work at businesses we have here, right? Not everybody who lives in Carver works in Carver, right? Um, we want to maybe make sure that we can pull employees from other areas. So, if we have somebody from Shakopee who is interested in working at Lakeview Industries and doesn't have transportation, they can come here, but they can't go back. We're not going to serve a Shakopee, because that's Edge. So, I guess, you know, when we, I know Southwest Transit promotes this service a lot with employers, um, and that would be a limitation.
And they do also. But if, if you're looking to get, to gain employment somewhere, we all look at our limitations about that, whether it fits with our time, our family, our schedule.
For sure, but as an employer.
Where we live, how we get there.
If I want to make sure I have a full pool of available employees, I want to set up business in a community, that might be something I look at, is what transit do they offer to get employees to me?
Do you know, this is, it just, I'm uncomfortable with it being all the burden of the city. Do you know if they're looking, I know for prime, uh, MD, they have partners with the medical clinics. Do you know if they're working on any agreements with employers?
With employers? I'm not aware of it, um, I think that the way that they have approached it is saying, hey, we offer this service to bring employees to you, advertise this, right, as something that's available to employees, it might be something that the employer wants to subsidize the riders fair, for example?
Yeah.
And that, and take it that approach, I think, is how they've worked at it.
Like traditional employer.
Yeah.
Primes would have.
Yeah. Exactly.
So, again, how much are we willing to let this creep? Are we willing to spend $30,000, $40,000 without any controls in place? The, the getting to work part of that, if, if this is to become a mechanism for people to get to work five days a week, the city is going to be paying a little more than $250 per person per month to subsidize the ride to work. If we're willing to do that, that's great, but we have to make a decision, I guess, then, how far we're willing to go. And I, I don't know what kind of discussion we've had about that investment in this, or put some limitations in place that maybe drive behavior for getting to work. Or put some limitations in place that maybe drive behavior for getting to work, not at a city subsidy.
So I feel like we have a lot of questions on this, and we're not ready to move on this. If we are unable to move on this tonight, what happens tomorrow and next week?
Mayor and Council, they're willing to continue service and I think they'll, you know, just based on conversations I've had with Matt and Fiten, they're willing to give you a reasonable amount of time. I would say.
The increased twenty twenty-three rates, I assume?
I don't know the answer to that question, we can find out. I would, I'd say in order to, to move forward, what you need to do is probably in this case, make a motion to direct staff to like offer whatever that, um, we're willing to enter into an agreement, but with X, Y, and Z services. Related to Councilmember Perschmann's question, I, you don't necessarily need to answer that, but like, that's a conversation you might want to have, but that doesn't prohibit you from entering into an agreement. So I, I, I think you're there, I, I just think you, to Councilmember Perschmann's point, define what budget you want to set for it. Or if you don't, you just say, we're providing these services and whatever it costs, it costs. And monitor that on an annual basis during the budget season. But from a staff perspective, what we really need from you is direction on what, you know, essentially your list of demands are. You know, you can, you know, you could certainly adopt it as presented, you could say, we're willing to adopt it, but we want, uh, we want to eliminate Edge and Airport, or we want to eliminate X, X, Y, and Z.
There's another question I have for Council. If we want to look at it a little bit different, let's just, I'll just throw, so we take Airport out, but we leave Edge in. But then do we say, when we get to next November, this is what's budgeted? And the, the program has reached its dollar amount limit? And, and then we, we are done and then we read, you know, we, up for next year if we know what, or we don't. But we budget for whatever we budget for the next year. I mean, are we willing to say, okay, if we're gonna subsidize somebody, you know, going to college or going to work um, with the Edge program outside of the Essential MD, are we willing to make that cut in the sand then? And say, okay, we reached our budget limit at November fifteenth and this program will begin again in January one?
I think we've kind of been through that already when Prime went away for the three-week period or whatever it was a few years ago. And we realized that that was rather unpleasant and highly impactful for some of our community members. And that was, you know, I look at twenty twenty-two numbers versus if it was twenty nineteen, that was a smaller number. So I don't think that that's the way to go. I think we need to go into this with our eyes wide open, realizing that if we're looking at roughly twenty twenty, or twenty-seven thousand dollars is what was spent in twenty twenty-two, using twenty twenty-three prices, we probably need to figure it's in the plus thirty at least.
Yeah.
So I think we need to go into it with our eyes wide open, not saying, we know we're short in the budget for this and we know that it's gonna run out sometime in December. I don't, I don't think that that's a responsibility.
Okay, and that's fine, I wanted to.
And we, and we get numbers every month, right? So that's the point of monitoring it, and I brought it up in several months, I was just like, really, did we budget enough? The numbers keep going up and up and.
Right, but then for me, on the flip side, if we're, if we're not willing to do that, because we don't think that's the best way um, to serve everyone who, who may want to use it, then we, I think we need to cut some of it out because I'm, I'm not, I, I don't feel comfortable and not willing to, to keep going to it's forty and it's fifty and it's fifty-five every year.
I think if it hits, it's kind of hit some tipping point where then we get in the taxing district. I just, isn't that it?
No, because we're still paying.
Because of the, because of the park and ride?
Well, the, the council, we haven't had this, the council hasn't had this discussion for several years, but there hasn't been an appetite for the transit taxing district. And Erin did a presentation, we can refresh that later this year, or have a conversation during your strategic planning. But, you know, the, the math does work out, I mean, if you're at twenty-five thousand, at five thousand people would maybe be fifty thousand when we're at ten thousand, that's theoretically by twenty thirty. So there are some pretty hearty discussions to have, just a matter of, um, how you want to integrate that into your decision-making process for this, um, this agreement. And if you, you know, you're certainly welcome to say, you know what, we, we don't even know at this point what we want to ask and you can table it to the, uh, January, I think it's seventeenth meeting. Um, or you could give us a list and say, well, we're okay with proceeding for twenty twenty-three, or in twenty-three, right? Yeah, twenty twenty-three, uh, with these, with these stated changes, whether it's taking out a certain service or, uh, you know, you can frankly request anything, it'd be up to Southwest Transit to decide if they're willing to move forward on any other requests. Doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah, that would be my ask, to see if we can do kind of all a cart menu, or like, can we take out the airport?
Let's maybe work backwards from what we agree on, I hear us all maybe at a consensus about removing the airport? Or a majority?
Yeah, I.
Sorry, Joy.
I'm majority.
I, I, I'm still very black and white on transit.
Okay.
So I, it's either transit or not transit, and they're gonna continue to add different prime services and then we're gonna nitpick each one. It's kind of how I see this going, so I kind of think all in or not in.
Well, and I'm looking.
I'd like to know if we have the option to be all in or not all in.
And I think we should approach them with what we want to, rather than just sitting back and waiting for them to tell us what they're gonna do.
I, I just don't know if it's, if they can execute it, right? Because they have one set of software for Prime, right? And I don't know if they can program it in, oh, if I'm starting in Carver, oh, I can only offer these destinations. I don't know, but fair question that we can ask.
Lori, I would rather go to them saying, here's what our wants are than waiting for them to tell us, because then they're gonna say, nope.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so majority, I'm hearing, remove airport.
No airport for me.
No airport.
No airport.
Okay. The next thing that we're talking about, I think we all think that MD should stay in.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, I think we all like Essential.
Yes.
Yes.
I think we like, for the most part, regular prime rides going from Carver to Chaska, Chan, Victoria.
And EP, what am I missing?
Yes, if Eden Prairie's included, absolutely, that's a hub.
Okay. And I am for removing Edge. I am for removing Edge.
I don't have a strong opinion on that one.
If it preserves the program?
Yeah.
I'm for removing Edge. Meaning?
If we make it work.
Yeah, right, because if, if we're not going to agree to thirty thousand or we're not going to agree to forty thousand, then I'm for removing Edge.
Okay. So I think the motion would be, and I'm not making a motion, but I just want to tee it up to see if it's something that we, sounds right. But the motion would be something about directing staff to reconnect with the folks at Southwest to see if we can.
To propose to them.
I think.
Sure, yes.
To see if we can get, to propose a contract that just contains regular Prime, Essential, and MD. And see.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Erin, but I think the, the council, based on what I'm hearing, could probably make a motion to approve the agreement just for Southwest Prime MD. That's a standalone agreement, a separate agreement for just the MD service. It sounds like everybody's on board with that one. And then the second motion would be to direct staff to, um, negotiate an agreement for Southwest Prime, uh, but remove, that, see if we could remove the airport service along with the Edge service, because I think those two are both associated just with the Prime contract. Is that right, Erin?
Yes, so there's two contracts in the packet, one of them is MD specific, so you could move forward with just that one.
Yes.
Just a question for the city attorney. If they could approve the MD contract, they could also make a, a motion or consider making a motion to approve the, the regular Prime agreement contingent upon the Edge and Airport service being removed. That way, if Southwest agrees, it, we could immediately get into the contract, is that acceptable?
Yes, sure, yeah, then it could just be executed when I bring it back to the council.
So I'm trying to just do a quick check here, am I rough, let's see, five, ten? Twenty-seven, so in the October just want to be, like, my concern is that we get all these concessions and then between the combination of the program continuing to be successful and perhaps what we're cutting, not necessarily being the meat of this agreement where most folks travel. I'm just trying to take a look at like percentage-wise. So for the first one hundred entries, which goes through the thirteenth of October, October first through the thirteenth, there are twenty-seven Shakopee Mall of America Airport rides out of a hundred, so.
We don't have a sortable table here, do we?
No.
Is that a request?
No, no.
So Ms. Smith, can we get, uh, the ridership statistics in a sortable Excel table?
Or just, are we looking for?
I think you're looking for the category, so I think the ask, because I think these came from Southwest Transit. It's part of our billing statement, I think, as Lynn said, um, that we could ask Southwest Transit to add a column and clarify which prime service this was, right? Was this Airport, was this Edge, was this Essential, was this MD?
Yeah.
Or normal Prime.
Better request.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the agreement with Southwest Transit for Southwest Prime MD.
I'll second.
So a motion by Mayor Johnson and Councilmember Sayer, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion passes, alright. I was counting, so if somebody else wants to make the motion that Brent suggested, otherwise I can try to cobble it together.
It'll be, so it'd be to consider a motion to adopt the Southwest, uh, Prime service agreement excluding, uh, the MSP Airport Service and the Prime Edge Service.
I will make that motion.
Right, we got a motion by Councilmember Mock.
Okay, I will second that.
And, uh, first motion by Councilmember Perschmann, who didn't make a first on it, he made a second, to be clear. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Nay.
Right, do we need real call?
Mm-hmm.
Please call real.
Councilmember Perschmann?
Aye.
Councilmember Mock?
Aye, Kristy Mock.
Councilmember Sayer?
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight?
Nay, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, Courtney Johnson. Right, motion passes, four one. Okay. Thank you all, that was a long, but I think good conversation. Will be continued if Southwest goes for it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just to clarify needs of the council, so I have Councilmember Pershmann's request for a sortable table or.
Yeah, a table with a column that identifies the primes.
Services, are, are there any other to-dos that the council has or expectations of staff going forward related to this topic?
I would like us to address this in our strategic plan discussion and talk about transit and Carver and really what we want. You know, maybe revisit some of the taxing districts just to re-ground ourselves, um, talk about the, the park and ride financials and what we have left in our contract and stuff like that.
Joy, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Is that gonna encompass future budget if we do decide to expand this or continue on at a higher rate?
Um, no, you're, the motion was to.
I understand that, but I'm just preparing for whatever they come back with if we have to make a choice. And then do we talk about extra budgeting there?
Yeah, I think we have to do that when they come back. I mean, we can.
I wasn't sure of what you're asking for encompass that.
So I was talking about our strategic plan discussion as a city and talking about transit in general and encompassing more than just Prime and just make sure we all kind of have a vision of what we want to do. Then we can align these decisions to those visions. But, um, uh, this reminded me of another ask I think we have of staff is to, um, as we reach out to Southwest Transit to see if they have any kind of forecast that they can give us based upon what they're seeing of costs, would they anticipate another price increase to the city in twenty-four? Do they think they'd hold it still? I mean, it's a guess, right? Um, and of course, though, their promise is to get back to us earlier in the budget cycle, but.
Joy, I have a question, when, just for you, when they do their budgeting, does that align with ours or, because we did get everything late this year?
Correct.
So there's that.
There is budgeting, yeah, this is not negotiated as part of the budgeting.
For?
For Southwest Transit, yeah. So as they do their budget, they don't say, hey, these are the rates we're gonna charge Carver and Victoria. Because that's what I was like, did I miss it?
Right.
During our budgeting discussions, and it's not part of that.
Okay.
This is a very low-dollar contract amount in the big budget of Southwest Transit. So this is not negotiated as part of that.
Okay, okay.
However, you know, they did promise that if they do plan to make annual price changes to the cities, that they would get that information sooner so that the cities can include that in our budget cycle.
Alright, moving on to communications. Mr. Merrick, nothing? Um, you know what, actually, before we get into that, Eric.
Oh, yes.
Um, so it's a tradition, and it's truly not hitting on you, and I truly come at this from a place of wanting to get to know people better, but whenever we have folks come to the city, new employees, new firefighters, we had, uh, Dr. Sales Adams do it. I think I made Julia Coleman do it, you know, like, at equal opportunity, everybody gets the opportunity to play two truths and a lie. Um, so with that, why don't you tell us your two truths and a lie?
Alright, I had to write them down so I could, uh, make sure I didn't make a mistake in my lie here. Okay, so this is brushes with fame, uh, everyone gets fifteen minutes, these are more like thirty seconds, alright?
Excellent.
So two true statements, one false. I was on the first ride at Space Mountain when it opened in Disneyland.
Ooh.
That's one. I was momentarily detained in Washington DC, uh, when my father and I physically collided with Justice Alito at a hotel. And you can ask for further details on it.
We do that after we get to the council lie.
I was picked out of the waiting line for Wheel of Fortune as an alternate contestant.
Okay, we all do a show hands on which one we think is the lie. And everybody at home gets to pick, nobody thinks that number one, nobody online?
So.
Dave, doesn't she have one? Everybody online pretty much has number one or, nobody thinks, oh, Brent's the only one that thinks two's the lie. Alright, which one's the lie?
Okay, so I was very young, we were at Disneyland, and the astronauts that were there to do the grand opening and cut the ribbon for the ride were in the hotel room next to us. So I got to be one of the first kids on Space Mountain.
That's fun.
Uh, number two, yes, we were in Washington DC. Uh, Justice Alito and his bodyguard were coming through the entrance, we were going out and we plowed right into them. Uh, this was at the, uh, Capital Hotel in, in DC and, uh, there was no way to know if that was planned or not, so we were briefly detained.
How briefly?
Uh, just a couple of minutes, they realized that we were tourists without an agenda.
How old were you?
Uh, this is not too long ago, this would have been, I don't know, maybe eight or nine years ago, yeah. Uh, the last one is, is false, I was never on the Wheel of Fortune.
Alright, well, thanks, thanks for being a good sport. Um, with that, Eric, since we have the floor, are we just kind of go around and do council updates if you have any?
Uh, no, I don't have any council updates, it's, uh, it's a privilege for me to be here. Uh, I am especially happy to be with, uh, the group of council members that are here today. I, as a citizen, I've been very happy with, with, uh, the direction the city has gone, with the city staff we have and, uh, I feel privileged to be, to be here participating with you, so thank you.
Thank you, that's very nice, I don't know how to follow that. I don't actually have much besides, again, the Soggy Bottom is coming up at the end of the month on the twenty-eighth. Um, it's a Good Cause Medical Fund. It's a good cause, uh, medical fundraiser, so you can go on our Facebook page, um, or our website and you can link in there to donate or to, um, register for the event. For the Carver Alliance, I should say that. I know where, I know what Facebook page I'm talking about, but.
I don't have any updates.
I don't have anything.
All right, um, the only thing that I have, um, was Brent sent an email, but just a reminder, if you guys are interested in the League of Minnesota Cities Race, Intro to Race Equity Seminar, I think you and I and Brent are already signed up, but it seems like it's gonna be a good one. Welcome to Eric, I feel like you've been in the wings for a couple of months now, welcome to.
Well, thank you.
The bench, um, so with that, um, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Johnson, a second by Councilmember McKnight. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes, good evening, everyone, thank you.